This meeting to order. Regular board meeting, Monday, September 11th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Sterling?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. McKnight?
Present.
Mrs. Carlson, here. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Hacey?
Here.
Mrs. Meeks, here.
Pam Cook, Recording Secretary.
Torey Arbo, Superintendent.
Shelley Wagner, Human Resources.
Michelle Ir, Curriculum and Instruction.
Jason Lill, Communications and Community Relations.
Josh Ram, Business and Operations.
If I could get everybody's attention, I would like to take a moment to remember the attack on September 11th, 2001. If we could just get a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Turn this over to Jason Bloom.
Awesome. Well, this evening, we have some of our friends from Olson Park Elementary School here to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Somebody invite them in with their principal, Mrs. Nelson.
All right. All right, and here we have the Students of the Month from last May from Olson Park. So, ready? Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Stay right here.
Stay here. So, I'm going to cover the board. If you can stay standing, I'm going to have these people just stay here. And I'm going to get a photo.
We just stay where we are.
Stay where we are.
Stay where we are.
I'm going to need to bring them back.
Wide end, yeah. We're trying something new. Okay.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Thank you guys.
Awesome.
Hey, thank you guys.
Want to get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Sterling, thank you for the moment of silence for 9/11 and for Principal Nelson bringing the kids back. Just love the kids. Just love seeing the kids. So, the mission of the Harlem Solidarity School District as a vital part of the community is to help diverse learners realize their unlimited potential by providing an educational program dedicated to academic excellence and the development of strong character in a safe and respectful learning environment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve board meeting minutes, regular and closed minutes of August 21st, 2023? School Improvement Days, August 21st, 2023? Public Carrying Minutes and E-Ring Plan Public Carrying Minutes.
Second. Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson? Aye. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hacey?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks? Aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Back over to Jason.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, this evening, I had a cancellation and a rescheduling, and so I do not actually have anybody physically here for recognition tonight. But I do want to take the opportunity to do a couple of things, one of which being, yes, please. September marks Suicide Awareness Month, and so I wanted to take a moment to bring light to a resource that we have available for our students, our staff, and our families. You've probably seen this in our newsletters. It's scattered all over our website. But I just want to take a moment specifically for our live stream, because Michael will be putting this up on the screen for our live stream, but to show you all this resource and what's available to our students, staff, and families. And so, Safe to Help is a reporting mechanism available. This is actually something that's been adopted since we started, actually been adopted now with the state of Illinois, which provides multiple ways for students, staff, and families to report concerning situations. It also has a plethora of resources available. You can see at the bottom here, if you're to click on one of these links, it'll take you to the Safe to Help website. It provides resources, information for students, staff, and families. And so, I just wanted to take a moment to obviously bring light to this, but also to thank our students and staff that have been part of this and have really worked through some of the reports that have been made. Even last night, we had a situation we worked through with some of our staff, admin. A big kudos and a big thank you to the student that reported the situation to us. We were able to connect with law enforcement, put somebody over to the house to do a wellness visit. And so, I want to say thank you to the students that have taken advantage of this system, whether it be for themselves or for their friends, and also our staff that really are available, our admin specifically, to respond to these situations. So, the way this system works for us is there's three levels of reporting. So, the most serious being a critical alert. A critical alert, if the Safe to Help team deems there's a concern for a student or individual's well-being, they will go to a critical alert, which will send emails, phone calls, and an automatic call to 911, so that the response can be as quick as possible. I've seen in most cases, that response happen within 15, 18 minutes, we'll have an officer at that student's home. And so, the response has been great, but what also does is it allows us to follow up as an organization. So, for example, the situation that I referred to last night, this morning, our staff is ready. Counselors are ready to meet with that student and to provide support that's needed. So, again, kudos to them, but a big shout out to our students, and we want to encourage our students as part of this kind of affirmation of Suicide Awareness Month. Use this resource if you ever have a concern. If you are ever concerned about your safety or the safety of somebody else, please, please reach out. This is great for after-hours, obviously during the school day. Go to your administrator or staff who are trusted adult. But after-hours, 24/7 monitoring, this is a great resource and a way for those reports to be given to the appropriate people and action to be taken appropriately. So, just want to take a moment to thank everyone that's been involved in this and for our students that are making these reports. The other thing I wanted to do tonight is put on your calendar. We're still kind of in the process, what else can we just, yeah? But we are in the process of developing or setting up a Harlem Hogs Night. Olson Park PTA has kind of kicked off an event in December, on December 16th, where they're going to be doing some things that will benefit the Olson Park PTA. But one of the things that I'm really excited about is that they've decided to really try to make this a Harlem night. And so, on December 16th, we're still working through some of the activities, but it will be a Harlem night at the Ice Hogs game. And so, there'll be t-shirts that are made specifically for Harlem School District. So, our schools will be able to benefit from the sales of those t-shirts, but it'll be a cool way to kind of bring our community together and all of our schools together. And I think there's even talk that Dr. Arbo may be able to do a puck drop or something like that, so we might. So, I just want to put that on your radar, December 16th. It's a six or seven o'clock game. We'll be obviously communicating all the details and really trying to pump this up as a community or Harlem School District's night at the Ice Hogs. But thanks to the Olson Park PTA for kind of getting that going and thinking outside of their four walls. So, it's all good for you.
That is awesome. Thank you so much. All right, we have one comment from the community. Would you like to?
It's me. Okay, I'll be really quick. I feel like I've been here so much lately. But I just wanted to give a little plug, a little shout out to the Harlem Veteran Project. We are screening our longest full-length documentary at the Mosaic Film Festival. Take your own notes. So, it's this Friday. We're actually the spotlight of the kind of film festival. And then, we actually just heard we got a second screening Sunday, too. So, focuses on all female veterans, five female veterans in the Rockford, well, like local-ish area, ones out in Byron. But yeah, so the really cool thing about this that I wanted to like just throw in there, too. So, when we started this project, because it took us a while, there were some current students, but a lot of alumni came back, too. So, former students that just, you know, were really invested in the project, were really invested in the school and the community, came back to work on this. So, you know, the students who worked on it have either graduated, have graduated grad school, are currently, like, one is currently went back to U of I to work now down there after just graduating grad school. So, it's been really awesome to see like that progression of students, like, be in it when they're here, but then be in it when they're out of here and want to come back and want to do that. So, just wanted to give a little plug for that and say how proud we are of like those kids for doing that and for, this will be our second film festival. So, we were in Beloit with this one and now Mosaic.
Missouri State?
That's in Rockford, the Nordloch. It's going to be at the Nordloch.
What times?
Seven o'clock.
On Friday?
On Friday. And all the women will be there, so there'll be a Q and A after. And a few of the individuals that worked on it will be there. There's a couple that are a little further away. And then, I have no idea about the Sunday one, because it just got added.
Ms. Nuna, can you send me a calendar invite and then I can get it set up?
Oh, I sure can. But yeah, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Will that be available online to?
That will not be available online, because we're still running through festivals. So, not quite yet. Stay tuned. Or I could probably hook you up with a link. I mean, I know where it's at.
From Byron?
Is it Byron or is it, it's out there. That is Erin. She was in a war when she's younger, so she was in Afghanistan, Iraq. So, and it spans, they span from like Vietnam to like more current day. One was in Germany, stationed in Germany. Two of them were Vietnam and then more modern day. So, like their experiences in the service, but also then like all of the stuff that they're doing after the service in the community, too. So, thank you.
Sorry, I thought you were saying water. It's like, get me water.
Thank you. All right, turn it over to Josh.
All right, thank you very much. Total payables this period were $1,863,188.79. There were void checks of $904.80. For payroll, last time I explained that we're going to bring a few of them. This kind of shores up through the summer pays, so it looks like a lot. There are four payrolls on here for a total amount of $12,675,241.55. For total expenditures of $14,538,430.34. Split out by fund, the education fund paid $11,838,180.82. The tort fund paid $11,959.56. The operations and maintenance fund paid $601,221.61. The transportation fund paid $613,770.37. The IMRF Social Security Fund paid $462,350.43. And the capital projects fund paid $10,0947.50. Again, for total expenditures of $14,538,430.34. Are there any unanswered bills?
Josh, can I ask, now your question.
What causes a voided check? You got an answer on a voided check?
They lost it. They changed an account. There's all kinds of little things, like an invoice ends up getting voided. There's various reasons, and it lays out in there. Name error, bank error, duplicate payment. So, it says on there what they are, but little things happen here or there. That is it for the bills?
Motion to approve the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hacey?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks? Aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Turning it over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling. Since Josh didn't, or Jason didn't have any recognitions, I will recognize Mr. Bloom. You do a wonderful job, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the presentation on the great things that Harlem School District does for its staffs, students, families. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. And since I get to go first, I can mention what a great presentation that is. I kept trying to think of a word to describe it. It's a floral wonderment that we have to look at. It's just beautiful. So, thank you for all the effort that went into putting that up for us to enjoy. And I was really hoping that when you said there was going to be a Harlem Hog Night, it would involve bacon.
Very welcome. Bacon cheeseburger?
Yeah.
So, the next Education Committee meeting will be October 24th, right? October 24th at 4:30 right here, the last Education Committee meeting. Went very well as we set the tone for the remainder of the school year and looking forward to that. So, everyone is invited? You, too, Nick. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kurt Thompson.
Sure. Like to thank Olson Park and the students coming into the pledge. I'm so glad it's back in session for lots of reasons, but that is definitely one I get to enjoy for each one of those. As much this time around, I do, I'll give a plug. It seems like a good plugging time. If you are not watching Jeremy Boyes and his Instagram feed and the amount of work and thought and student participation, it's fine, but you are missing out. It is absolutely fantastic, and I love to see that positivity of what's coming out of the high school in just a very creative form for us parents and the students. So, a little plug for him there. And yeah, outside of that, another thing you can't miss is Josh's work. I mean, it is top-notch, and if you really want to see what's happening with that, that's going to be October 4th, right here at, make sure the time that moves, 5:30 this time. You'll be ready for a good one, Josh. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank Olson Park for doing a wonderful job. The pledge this evening, like, it's just really nice to be able to see the students again, and they did an amazing job. Also, the artwork is just making my eyes just feel so beautiful just looking at it. They did a wonderful job. The colors and everything, it's totally different. As Mr. Smith said, it's just, it's really nice. And also, thank you, Jason. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mitchell L. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, Shelby. But I just want to say, thank you, Kira. You guys are doing an amazing job with the vet projects. And over the years, I've seen you grown and grown and you expanded, and just wish you continue success. It's just, if anybody get a chance next year to go and just any night or day, whatever day next year they're going to do some, just if you're able to go, just go and just watch the hard work that the kids, the students are doing to present the vets and how happy the vets are to be recognized. So, I want to say I wish you all the continued success. I haven't been able to go to a football game. Hopefully, I'll be able to go this week. Nope, I think I'll be at the Minnesota next game I plan on going. I want to apologize. You know how different things come up, so you're not able to attend. But I want to be back being the number one fan from the board, attending those games in the future.
I'm taking that from.
But I just want to say the next social injustice meeting will be September 28th at the high school, 4:30, and that's 1:45. So, if you're available, please attend. That's all I can say. And then, thank you. Thanks to everybody that attended tonight. That's it.
So, I'm going to kind of echo Kurt Neblin. I kind of always echo, because I'm stuck third or fourth. All right, Larry, you, too. Once again, I'm going to talk about the artwork that's to my back. Just letting you guys know, there is another wall that's over here. I heard there's something somewhere that there may not be.
There is, and so, out of courtesy to my property service department, because it's the start of the school year, that's not as. That's not as high a priority as promised.
I'm just making sure it's still on the list.
It wasn't last year either.
I'm just making sure it's still on the list because.
It is in my office, ready to go.
This is beautiful. Um, also I wanted to, um, I was, since the last board meeting, I was able to go to two of our elementary schools. Um, and I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Rollinson and Mr. Renneke for allowing me and taking me through their schools and, and letting them know what, um, you know, what their needs are. And some of their needs, and I, I've talked to Michael with this, some of the needs are as simple as aesthetics with paint. Like, hey, we would like to paint it. We would get, our teachers, our staff would volunteer to paint it to beautify our school. So Michael and I, um, he doesn't know this yet, but we are going to meet with a company to negotiate a district price on purchasing paint, um, so we can bring the costs down. Um, we don't know the logistics of it yet, but, um, we're gonna see what they have to say because if, I, I mean, also on the beautification stuff, I happened to notice at the high school and a couple of other schools, the signs have been cleaned up. The exteriors are starting to look a little bit nicer. Um, we have beautiful buildings. Let's, you know, let's, let's show them off inside and out. Um, the other last thing I wanna say is this, um, you know, sports are in full swing right now. And so this past Saturday, I, because of my daughter being on the dance team, I was tasked to work concessions at the high school while there was a soccer tournament on, a volleyball tournament, a swimming.
Oh, my.
And I'm forgetting, and tennis, and tennis. So let's put it this way, for somebody that's not in food services, it was really warm back there. But I got to walk out and go see some of the other stuff and, and, you know, to, to see the turnout, see a full parking lot on a Saturday, it, it just, it just warms my heart and it, it, you know, you just gotta feel good about it cause everything looked like it went off without a hitch. So for everybody that was a part of those this weekend, thank you. And if you didn't like your food, it wasn't me. Maybe it was. If you liked it, it was. No. With that being said, I am done. So.
Thank you, sir. That's gonna be hard.
I get one a year. There it is.
Uh, thank you to everybody for coming to the meeting. It's nice to see lots of faces in the, in the crowd. Uh, thanks to Olson Park. Uh, I love these little people. I just, I just love watching them freak out, coming in here and scared and all of their, and then they do such an excellent job. So it's wonderful to see them. I have missed the last couple of meetings after sitting on the ocean shore for a while. So I'm glad to be back and see school in session. And it's been very quiet in the neighborhood. So the buses have got it figured out. And it's, it's nice to see kids getting on the bus and parents waiting at the stops again. And it's fun to, uh, see things going on. I don't have an awful lot. I, I think it's really neat, this safe to help thing. I, I think that's gonna make a huge difference in kids and parents and how to get stuff worked out in their families as well. And this is, to me, this is one of the most amazing ways to use coffee filters, other than caffeine. And so it's, it's really cool and really pretty. And, and I really, I don't have anything to top that. So.
Ms. Carlson, I believe that these are from Loves Park Elementary. I said that before, but, uh, Ms. Stoneham from Loves Park, the other teacher, had come over last week and put these up. So just so you're aware.
So we've got a lot more schools to cover all these walls.
Ooh, shots fired.
All right. Are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
I'm on.
I didn't want to, didn't stop.
Actually, uh, believe it or not, don't have a whole heck of a lot tonight. Um, I'm excited to start getting back into, uh, the schools come October, starting with, uh, the sixth and the SIP day. I'm, uh, pretty stoked about that actually. Can't wait to do that. Um, uh, thank you to Olson Park and Loves Park for figuring out dinner plans for Wednesday and Thursday, uh, or Thursday and Friday, two of them. Uh, they got food nights coming up. So Olson Park at Sam's on Harlem and Loves Park at Beaveroo on North Second. Um, Jason, thank you so much for sharing the, um, safe to help. Uh, I am sitting here in front of you today because my guidance counselor tipped off my mom and my mom acted on it. So, um, I could only imagine, uh, those resources, not gonna say a year, but, uh, a little while ago when I was in middle school. So, um, uh, so yeah, thank you for sharing that. Um, yes, I, I think that's, that's all I got tonight, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So we have a note for a public hearing and a final budget scheduled for September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three at five forty-three P M. Our next regular board meeting will be September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three at six P M. Our next policy committee meeting will be October sixteen, twenty-twenty-three at four-thirty P M. I have a recommendation to release redacted closed minutes from January one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion. Aye.
Uh, that'd be later.
I tried.
Throwing me up. Okay. Um, and lastly, the advanced learner program and fine arts. Uh, I wanted to, one, we have board policy, but, uh, uh, from our board rules that, uh, I wanted to bring up and talk to the, the group about. Um, we've had some ideas kicked around. So I wanted to get a consensus to ask our hack to look into expanding both fine arts and the advanced learner program. Obviously this will take more than thirty minutes of their time. So to do this, I would, I'm just looking to see if I can get consensus from the board.
Twenty percent. Definitely.
Um, the, the things that they'll be looking into would be going through third through fifth, um, with the program and maybe expanding, uh, the advanced learner program to two more schools, maybe more, but we'll see. I just wanna get some options in front of you guys, but to do that, they're gonna have to do some work. So I just needed.
Is there already activity going on, looking at what the need is? Have you?
Yes, we've, we've been pulling data and we've been, uh, digging into some of this as we knew that there were gonna be some adjustments made. With, with this grant going to the middle.
So is this in addition to what's already?
Yes. Well, this is making it more formalized and the kind of like, the board's also asking as a directive to say, this is what we would like some information on or possibilities of.
Due to, you know, things space, things for the resources, some of our educators are gonna be moved around. I think, not saying we're going to, what's done specifically, but I think there really should be looked at for opportunities. And this is a great time. Like there's the possibility of losing some talent. And if we can utilize some of that talent for some of these programs or other resources, I think we should look at it.
Not to mention expanding to over the twenty-five, I, I don't know if it's exactly twenty-five, but the one class, um, for each program. So.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have them all in every school, just because we're losing teachers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how possible, I, cause I just looked at the WALD study. So you might wanna relook at the WALD study cause I was very ambitious too. It might kind of pumped the brakes for me. So.
Our, our full, so I mean, this would also help moving some of the kids around the district as well.
Well, I didn't know with putting the sixth grade over, then of course there might be space to put, you know, that kind of thing.
Talking, taking the sixth grade out will help some of them schools breathe too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you know how many people, how many, cause I know that you've gotta qualify for the fine arts, the A L P program. You know how many? I heard it was over a hundred for the fine arts last year. Is that?
I couldn't tell you the exact number that.
And like twenty-six made it.
That, um, were part of that program. Um, I'm more familiar from the advanced learner program as far as like where the cutoffs are and how many people were close to the cutoffs, um, rather than the fine arts.
There's been like two-day sessions.
Yeah, the fine arts, both my kids went through it.
Yeah.
It holds a nice spot. And it's, and that was one of the big worries about moving the sixth grade is, are what's gonna happen to that program? And as long as I'm on the board, it's, it's, it's never going anywhere. So both my kids went through it. It was fantastic.
Sorry. Do you have consensus now?
Um, yeah, thumbs up.
More to your plate, guys.
Yes, of course.
I also wanna say thank you to Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
She does a lot. You guys just don't know. And she, whenever you need her or need anything, she's always willing to help. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right. Um, first time I get to say this in a long time. Everything's been mentioned and said. So I will now turn it over to Dr. Herb.
Uh, I have no report this evening, but next week, um, Mr. Herbert is, um, going to, um, join me in doing some presentations in regards to, um, some C T E and the pathways.
That's exciting. It's awesome. Josh Rand.
All right. Thank you. Uh, before I wrap my items, Mike mentioned the public hearing. So at the next board meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the budget to review any changes and then ask the board to adopt the FY twenty-four budget. So starting with my items, my first item is a recommendation to approve a resolution declaring surplus property at Windsor, Loves Park, Olson Park, and Parker Center. I have no facility request.
Getting rid of a whole Spider-Man?
I was just gonna say, what is Cowgirl, Kate, and Coco? We're getting rid of one of them for the Timatch.
Just kidding. Just kidding. Yeah. Spider-Man's out.
Just rack me up that we have to put these. I just, yeah. You good?
Motion.
Next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the regional office of education for professional services with the Harlem Middle School staff on how to effectively build collaborative relationships at a cost of eight thousand, four hundred dollars, paid for a post-secondary success grant, and that grant ends at the end of this month. Uh, there's a memo from Mr. Hubert on there. Uh, just explaining what that is. Are there any questions on that item?
If the grant ends, is that going to then go to the, uh, school funding or is it, does it kind of go through?
Use it or lose it, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yes.
Use it or lose it.
Mr. Hubert talked, spoke, I'm sorry, I don't wanna speak for you, but spoke to the state, um, just this last week. And anything that we don't use, we just lose and it goes back to the system.
Use it.
That's a good question. Any other questions? Next is a recommendation to approve a five-year subscription for P A P S lab app, which is a practical assessment exploration system for the high school at a cost of ten thousand dollars, paid with IDEA ARP and IDEA flowed through funds. So five thousand of this IDEA ARP, which is stimulus money, also ending. Uh, the other five thousand is for future years of service, which we can't, service, which we can't use as stimulus funds. So those will roll into the regular IDEA grant. And there's a memo from, uh, Director Heidi Lang on there, a little bit about the P A P S lab. Any questions on that? Next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with C E R X or CIRX Solutions for Commissioning of Harlem High School C T E Addition and Renovation at a cost of thirty-three thousand, five hundred. Uh, so this is required in the energy code. This is someone who's gonna be R F and they're gonna be going through and making sure the systems, uh, work as designed and are functional through all the different pieces of the addition.
Can't believe it. The redundancy of a hundred people we have to pay to say, let's.
And D L A did get two quotes and this was about fourteen thousand cheaper than the other.
And it's local and a veteran. So at least there was some shiny, nice thing.
And we pushed, we pushed back on it a lot.
Good silver lining.
We asked a lot of questions on this one, like, really? It's required. But really?
It's the mandated silver lining.
There you go.
Ish.
Any other questions on that?
I'm sorry.
My last item is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the regional office of education for professional development workshops for teachers and administrators on institute day, October sixth, twenty-twenty-three, at a cost of eight thousand dollars, paid with, it says Title II, but the state has recommended that we use that post-secondary success grant on the use or lose it piece. So.
Oh, that's, that's even better.
When Jake made that phone call, that was part of the recommendation, um, when he read the descriptions and, uh, suggested that we utilize those funds.
Absolutely.
So who decides the actual title, the sessions that are, you know, the topics of the sessions that are done?
Jake typically works, Eric Mickey worked with the buildings and the R O E about one.
You discussed some of this on business services as well, cause my component was, was that question exactly. And then also, um, if we get, if we get some that are in there, how to make sure they're not either redundant or that they're, the teachers are actually eating success from them. So there's surveys as well that are done for all of these to make sure that we should bring the staff back to do similar presentations. And then you can go into how they're actually picked.
So, you know, we look at, um, what is our topic, what is our needs, et cetera? Um, what are some of the trends, uh, trends that we're seeing within education? And for this particular time, the, um, sessions or the individuals that we are, we're able to get to come, um, and speak for, to us. One's from CPS. They are the, um, chief high school officer. And then we have, um, also someone from N I U, um, who's a foundation, who's coming and speaking. And then also from Rockford University, a professor. So it's sometimes some opportunities to get people in based off of their description on topics that we don't always get a chance to have somebody come in and present.
Now, is that a survey that goes to all employees or just teachers or just?
Uh, it's based off of the feedback that they fill out each year. Uh, we have them fill out, um, after the different P Ds. And then we also, as part of the, uh, Title II grant, we have to ask what topics are they're interested in. And so then we try to find things throughout the year that meet those needs.
I will say that it's, it is beneficial and I work more on the support staff side of these, but when we do learning fairs, it requires a lot of people to present and to train and to lead, just to spread out because we have five or some teachers that have to be spread out into multiple sessions. And so any supplemental support we have, cause we'll have internal people and then obviously the external people. So.
We'll have over twenty-five sessions each time that people have to choose from.
If there's no other questions, I'll clear.
Thank you, sir.
Evening. Uh, tonight I have the recommendation to approve the personnel agenda. There is no addendum. The first thing I'd like to direct your attention to is transfers. On the second page, at the top of the page, you will see a transfer listed for Dee Schneider. Um, strike that one. She's decided not to transfer. She'd like to stay in her current role as a parent educator. So we're gonna take that one off.
Okay.
Alrighty. So then that will, uh, give us a total of fourteen transfers, one leave of absence request, twenty-one employments, and eleven resignations.
I did have one question.
Are there two Mitch McCrackens?
No. So if you look closely, it went from four to five hours one week, and then the next week we increased it another option.
Yes.
Oh.
That's what, that's why I was.
Yes.
So really it was four to six hours, one McCracken.
Yes, but it's different weeks. So, yes. Yeah. I know. It seems kind of weird. Yes. Thank you.
Dr. Yarbo.
Nice observation, though, Mr. Smith. Um, no FOIA requests, um, this time, but I will have one, uh, for the next meeting. I do wanna acknowledge though, um, the hard work that the high school is doing. Um, I don't know if, if you all saw it, but the, the U S News rankings came out. Um, and out of eighteen area schools, Harlem ranked number four. And I know we have some work to do cause we wanna climb and get to number one, but I think a number four ranking out of eighteen area schools is pretty, pretty good. And so I wanna give a, give a shout out to, to our high school staff and the hard work that they're doing. Also too, I wanted to, uh, bring attention to our partnership, um, with the United Way, um, and, and really focusing on literacy um, and how we can help our families, um, with resources. Um, when we look at Winnebago County, and this was some numbers that was given to me, our literacy rate right now as a county is thirty-two percent. So anytime that we can partner, um, with, with organizations that will help us with that and improve that, um, I think it's awesome. So thank you for, to United Way as well for that. And I think we're gonna have them in.
Yeah, October tenth, they'll be here.
Yeah. So that ends my report.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve the personal agenda and the, no addendum? Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hacey?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Aye.
All right. We don't have a travel request. There's no facility request. So. Can I get a motion to approve the release of redacted closed minutes from January first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three? Mr. Smith, I should, no, motion.
Mrs. Hacey?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a motion to approve resolution declaring surplus property?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Meeks, aye. Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve an agreement with the Regional Board of Education for Professional Services with Harlem Middle School staff on how to effectively build collaborative relationships at a cost of $8,400, paid through the post-secondary success grant?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve a five-year subscription for PAES Lab App, Practical Assessment Exploration System for the higher, high school at a cost of $10,000, paid with IDEA ARP and IDEA flowed through funds?
Motion.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the agreement with CERX Solutions for Commissioning of the Harlem High School CTE Addition and Renovations at a cost of $33,500? Do I have to do this with rock cut as well?
Can we get a bundles deal?
How about, what, what's in it? Well, yeah, buy one, get one free.
At least half of them.
Just have them drive by. Motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Mr. McKnight?
Just thinking about that.
Aye.
Reluctantly.
Mrs. Carlson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve an agreement with the Regional Board of Education for Professional Development Workshops for Teachers and Administrators on Institute Day, October 6th, 2023, at a cost of $8,000, paid with Title II funds?
Isn't it a post-secondary success grants and not a Title II funds?
It is post-secondary.
I know it's written that way, but you were already in your role, so I didn't want to cut you off.
Post-secondary success grant.
Yes. Okay, thanks, guys. Paid with the post-secondary success grant.
Motion. Second.
Mrs. Carlson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Mrs. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
All right, can I get over to the board for announcements and discussion?
Real quick, when I made that announcement about United Way, I meant to also thank the staff and Maple. You know, and Parker Center, they do a lot of the work with that partnership, so thank you to the staff.
I've been thinking about Kurt's comments, and I think we need to find out from Dr. Boyce where one gets some of those orange pants.
We'll see if he divulges his secrets.
We'll see.
No one is interested.
I think it should be a board uniform, you know, orange pants, polos. Immediately kick out.
It's kind of like the Tennessee, like the.
Anyway, sorry. I've been thinking about now Dr. Boyce's Instagram the whole time, so.
I will say, if the board all decides to do that TikTok, I will buy the orange pants for you.
Challenge accepted.
That's tempting.
Challenge accepted.
That's tempting.
Very early on that shift. I see some yeses and no's.
Is it an all or none thing?
Probably. I had a question myself. I'm a little bit concerned. I know we talked about the budget last meeting, but I know Josh had brought up how the, they want to spend six figures to put in a kitchen at Machesney. And I was thinking about that over the weekend. It's like, there's only going to be two grades in that building as of next year. I know Betsy Kelly and, and the direct, both of the directors in food service have, have nixed the plan to put a kitchen in that building for years and years and years. My concern is that we have seven other elementary schools that don't even have more than a storage room for their kitchens. And it would be nice to see some of them get some of that money and update their milk coolers and their storage capacity and, you know, their supplies. And I know most of them have just a utility sink and not, you can't even use sanitizers. And such as that, I would just like to see that money go to all of the schools instead of putting in a massive kitchen at one school with only two grades. Now, maybe there's some secret plan in the future to put Marquette over at Machesney as well. But it just seems like a lot of money to just put in a kitchen, so.
Okay. Need a motion in a second to go into closed session to discuss employment personnel, 5 ILCS 120-2C1 and security procedures, 5 ILCS 120-2C8.
Motion.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasting?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sterling?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into close, so thank you, guys. Do you have anything?